I'm counsel budget work session for town if you'll ask for Tuesday, April twenty first, twenty twenty to order. If you'll call the roll, Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Penn?
Here.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Mr. East?
Here.
Mr. Goodman?
Here.
Mr. Clance?
Here.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
I don't know of any modifications to the agenda. I do not see any guests, but thank you all for coming out tonight. And at this point, we will move on to the finance line for the fiscal year twenty one budget work session. And I will turn it over to Mr. Up.
Okay. Uh, thanks, sir. Uh, I will start by, um, thanking everybody for, for doing the, the one on ones. I think it was fruitful conversations with everybody. We got a lot of good feedback, a lot of, um, different directions to, to consider and to, to think about. So what I did was to put a summary in the, um, in the packet that really kinda goes through and identifies department by department where the, um, where the changes have been compared to the, uh, what we're calling the baseline budget. And what that is, is where we are today minus the downtown grants and minus the EPA grants. Uh, those are the two major funds that we have in, in general fund that, um, aren't ongoing type operations. So, um, you know, if you take those two out, we're, we're right at a nine point seven million dollar base budget, um, uh, right now. Of course, you know, the, uh, the meeting in, in May will have a, a budget amendment. But, and that's the number that I'm using that the amend, the proposed amended budget minus the, the downtown and the, you know, and the EPA grants. Um, really what I've done is, is tried to go back and, um, based on a rev- revised revenue projection of eight point eight million dollars, um, put a, um, an expense, um, budget together, uh, and two things. One, as I said, I've gone through and identified where we've, where we've proposed cuts and also where I've proposed moving what I call it to a budget set aside. Some positions that are unfilled right now, capital expenses or capital projects, um, stuff like that. Together, uh, just over four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I believe. Um, those, those hit departments or, um, positions in the police, fire, general properties, vehicle maintenance and community development. Uh, those, those five, um, areas right now as, as well as the, um, capital. What I thought I'd do is just open up for conversation and see what, what council felt and what, what, you know, get some, get some feedback from council on, on what we've put together.
I got some good feedback, folks.
All right.
Uh, are you ready, Mr. Byer?
Basically, I wanna kinda start off is, uh, I, 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 I really think that we need to pass the budget for a solid foundation until this problem that we're in is over. When this problem is over, then we can always revisit with four or six or five to make the changes that has to be changed. Right now, we are in pretty good shape compared to jurisdictions around us. I would hate to be sitting on Christiansburg or Rutherford or Blacksburg council like that, facing millions. Not thousands, but millions. It's there. We're in good shape and it's because of the heartaches that Mr. Goodman and Mr. East, Mr. Penn, for you guys going here in the mayor, we went through years ago to get us here, to get us in. We're in pretty good shape. We're not, we're not the greats. We're in good shape financially. We're, we're, we're gonna be okay. Uh, we pass a budget, it's solid, you know, keep our employees going, keep the town, keep our citizens going forward with the services they pay for. And when this thing is all said and done, if it's June, July, we found out where we land at, then we can, we can have a meeting. If the budget needs to be changed or we wanna work on it, any four of us, any five of us, we control that. Nobody else does, us. Us, that's it. See if you see, see that there. So with that being said, I read through some of this stuff right here and personally, I think it's just, we're pulling meat off the bones. It's not there. That's just my feelings this time. So I went through and do a few checks on it. Is everyone, if you even know, on first responders, uh, in, in, in today's, we're in today, that's, that's just, that's not happening. It cannot happen. We have to be solid. Anybody that's been in the military, I was in the army, in infantry, you put your fighters up front. Because if you don't think that the dam won't open up or they won't rush you, then you take one of those people, one of those infantrymen out of that hole and open up a gap and enemy will come through. Same way with our police officer. Now, you have on here are, um, I see, uh, to the police department, there's their two hundred resource officer. I want it installed back at a later date. That something's very important. Maybe not today, maybe not next month, but truly that is something down the road that we, we must install back. You have to understand what that does. And, and, you know, they reach out to a lot of people and a lot, a lot of areas and it's, it's a good thing. Uh, the police officer right here, uh, I don't know whether it was one that, that you hardly mark, not feel, or is it one that says recently quit?
Recent, yeah, a recent.
We want to be very careful here, especially in today's world. Because when there is a, a panic, the police officer, everybody wants a police officer on their front porch for safety. It is their safety blanket. That's a very important thing. It's a love hate world. When there's nothing going on, they don't like it. But you let a tornado, you let something come through and Gary Roche does not have enough officers, neither does the sheriff, neither does the state. Once they through the tornado, we know that. There just wasn't enough that night to pull people out of the ditches, creeks, what have you. Just wasn't enough. But we got good, we lived with it. So that should be a learning point for us. We don't want to get into that. Second thing is our fire department. As a old volunteer fireman, I have on here the volunteer to do that. That is impossible. That is impossible. There is no way. Our volunteer firemen or the fire department, we have one, maybe two, that actually, uh, I, I'm assuming still, uh, man's twenty-four, seven, sometimes maybe three, but I know it's not four and five. So what volunteers do, so we'll know just briefly, and the chief, he wants to chime in, that's fine. Uh, if we have a fire on the south side, the people that are in the full time position, they keep the equipment there and normally the volunteers live around there. Their uniform is with them, their fallout gear, their, their fire, they're, they're, they're there. The truck arrives, they hook up, our volunteers jump on it, it's seconds, not minutes, it's not, it's not twenty-five, thirty minutes for a lot. I'm telling you right now, if you're in that second floor, the prettiest thing you can see is that new fire truck we got topping that hill over there. There won't be no question how much you pay for it. I guarantee you, there won't be no question. You could buy two at night. And as I've been there and I've seen it and I've seen what happens. So that's, that's for first responders and, and I've, I've just not, I've just, there's no, there's no meat to pick. There's no meat to pick. The other thing is on the public works, uh, uniforms, uh, wearing them, probably I'm assuming we're talking about their working uniforms. Is that what we're talking about? Uh, so I guess we're wanting these guys, ladies, to come in in their personal clothes, uh, jump down in a crack hole and unplug a sewer with their personal clothes and then go home and drag that home to their family instead of supplying uniforms. Is that what we're talking about?
No, actually, what that, uh, what we're, what, uh, those reductions just goes back to the number of employees, um, that would were paying for, or at least budgeting for, for uniforms. So we're still budgeting uniforms. The folks that are there that are employed will still have the uniforms that we have.
That's good.
No, I'm, we're not looking at going back to.
That's a good thing, right? That's a good thing. Okay, 'cause where I was reading right here was we was talking about taking their, their clothes. That's a good thing. Okay, that, that's a good move right there. Okay, then, then we can always install that back. And then you got some more cut for, I, I don't know where else, uh, like, we, we was fortunate, we didn't have a lot of snow, so a little bit shined on the town and we got supplies. Now, I don't, what we're gonna do with all that salt? I guess we.
Use it next year.
Whatever. But that's a good thing. Uh, that's, and let me hit on something and I'll let somebody else have it, is, is my senior citizens. Uh, everybody knows that they're near and dear to senior citizens and, and I wanna speak up for, uh, for them just for, there, there's no way, there's, there's, there's no more, there's no more meat to be pulled out of that. Ms. Amy, I know, and I hope she doesn't mind me using her name, but, uh, I, I do, I dearly, uh, I love her and thank the world for her. She, she is, she's the life of it. You wanna see her ride, go ahead and try to move that. Just go ahead and do something with that. But anyway, uh, I know she, every day of the week, I see her going to our seniors that are members of, or come over there and picking them up one at a time and ensuring that they get to a grocery shop. I've seen her physically go in and help them. That is something, there's no amount of money to pay for that. And she has taken money out of her own pocket. So my suggestion is, is I would like to see that budget grow by another thousand, two thousand dollars, I'll just be honest with you, to get them to the end of the year. When you have a hundred, hundred point five, uh, Ms. Hare, a hundred, what did we have for Christmas? Hundred and fifty?
Probably almost a hundred, yeah, we outgrew this baby.
Normally had fifteen or twenty show up. Until she became the, uh, director over there, whatever her title is. So I would like to see that one actually increased and not decreased to get them through the year. Now, everything you've had, you've got right here is, as far as I'm concerned, is pulling meat off the bones. It's just not there. It's not there. I'm with these people around about every day and we can nickel and dime this thing all you want to. Uh, but I, I would really like to, to, to get a budget passed, to get a foundation built. And then in June, July, guys, if, if we're still here, then we can have a, a budget hearing and do anything you wanna do with it. Anything. It's our budget. It's not the mayor's. He's here, he's a splitter. It's not them, it's us six. Or once it comes back, whoever it is. That's when you do your, that's when you do it. I'm not necessarily, 'cause my, my fear is that, that everything is going on right now, we gonna keep cut, keep cut, keep cut. And we'd love to land on our feet next week. We're perfectly good, even though we can always go back. And, 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 you know, maybe bring people back, you might, might not. They might land somewhere else. So that's all I have to say, like, this right here. And I appreciate the work that was done on, uh, town matter. I really do not find anything in this thing that I am interested in, in, uh, laying down. And, and that's just my side of it tonight. And, uh, I thank for the work that's done for everybody. It's just not been good times. But once again, I will say this. The sweat that Mr. Goodman, Mr. East, Mr. Penn and, and the mayor are fighting for nine years and love lost and sleepless nights and, and heartfelt cuts has put us in a great predicament today. Are we perfect? No. Are we millionaires? No. Well, we gonna pay our bills and we gonna pay our employees. And citizens therefore will come out on the end of this thing better than their surrounding towns. I feel sorry. I feel sorry for Christiansburg, Blacksburg, I hope the best. I don't know where they're gonna get, I don't know where they're gonna get, but.
Mr. Up, just to, Mr. Radcliffe's point on the police and fire, could you kind of elaborate on what your, what the, what the, uh,
Yes, sir.
process was?
Sir, the, um, the police and fire, well, take a step back on the, on the police department. Uh, we had, um, two vacancies when we were first starting to talk about this. And I think one vacancy had just happened before, just before our first budget work session. And, uh, we had, we were talking, we had talked amongst ourselves about what to do with either, um, fund the, um, the drug task force expansion or these two positions or what options do we have? So council came back and said, you know, if nothing else, unfund the community resource officer position for now to keep the drug task force as the priority. So that's, that's where we are. And then we had the, the, the vacancy that, that shows up here as the additional one that, that, since I'm not, uh, we have the hiring freeze right now. So what I've done is I've taken that, those costs, fifty some thousand dollars for total for insurance and all fringe, and put that in, in that budget set aside. So the, the, the funding for that position is in this budget. Now, it's in a different department right now and they'll take the council action to move it back once we know, um, what, you know, what, what money we have to play with, to work with. Um, but, but in this eight point eight million, the funding for the police department position is there. The funding for the fire department position is, is in the overall budget. Same thing for the general properties, community development and the, um, vehicle maintenance. So there is another department or I'd say budget set aside, um, waiting to, to see, to see what happens.
So this is, this is basically just kind of arranging the budget around the fact that we're, we have a hiring freeze on.
Yes, sir. I, I basically accounted for that hiring freeze and put the, the funds elsewhere.
So you didn't, you mentioned the drug task force, that was maybe one of my questions. Uh, they will not be impacted. Is that true?
And what you have tonight, they will not be impacted. They, they're not, uh, as, as I understand it, um, you know, we may have, hopefully we won't have any more turnover, you know, in the police department, but, uh, right now we have, um, um, three in the academy, going through the academy. And one is geared, is set up for that, uh, was, was part of that first phase of the, of the drug task force expansion.
Okay, so regarding the, uh, the fire and the part-time volunteer fire services?
Yes, sir.
This may be a question for the chief. My initial thought there was, you know, there's a lot of, well, not unlike a police officer, there's a lot of training and there's a lot of investment that goes into, to bringing these folks along so that they're effective in the field. Is there any concern that if we pull back from that position, uh, or, you know, not fund volunteer fire position, that we could put ourselves at a disadvantage? Or should I say we could put the fire chief and his team at a disadvantage? Is that a possibility?
Well, let me explain what this is. So we have a, um, uh, the current budget has twenty thousand dollars in, in the fire department for a fire service, volunteer fire service. So every volunteer that goes out on the call gets paid, I would say fifteen dollars for that call. So that's where that, this money comes out of. So if that volunteer goes on a Saturday training, that's a fifteen dollar call out. And, and so for the last several years, we spent anywhere from, uh, fourteen to twenty, mostly fourteen to seventeen. One year we, we did, um, go, go to the twenty. So, uh, I took the three, I proposed taking the three, the twenty thousand down to seventeen thousand, um, just, just as a, 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 again, another placeholder to look at. You know, if, if we're trying to find every single penny that, that, you know, go with Mr. Radcliffe's thing, you know, down to the bone, that's, that's where I, I was considering. So that three thousand can be added back at a later date when we, if we see the need. But right now, it's, that's, um, that's where I had left it, you know, it's in the, the budget set aside.
And I, I think that, and to, to, I think Mr. Radcliffe has some valid concerns. To, to that point, it'll be in the set aside fund and at a later date, we can always reallocate those funds if it's, if deemed necessary.
Sure.
So that we don't jeopardize any services or anything of that nature.
Right, so, yeah, there's, so the, the, the budget set aside fund, as long as we don't move more than eighty, eighty thousand dollars at a time, you only, you can do it as a simple council action. You move eighty-nine or propose moving eighty-nine thousand or more, then we have to have a public hearing. That's really the only, the only difference that they catch. But both of them, in which way it takes a council action to move it out of that budget set aside.
So, uh, uh, the way I'm kind of looking at this budget set aside, and correct me if I'm wrong, assuming that we get all the money that we need for the budget revenues are eight point eight million, like we hope, then all the things that are currently in the budget set aside will actually be able to be funded and move forward. It's only if we come in with a budget under, like, a revenues rather, under eight point eight million that we'll need to actually start making decisions of what in the budget set aside actually gets cut and not done.
The way I have it set up or recommended right now is, yes, if, if, if we come in and we realize or, or, or have a, a better grasp on the revenues in July, August, that we need to come, we need to fund a hundred fifty thousand dollars, the easiest cut to start with would be out of that budget set aside. And then you figure out what to do with the rest of it. Uh, that's at least the way I've, I have it set up right now. There's still gonna be some hard conversations to have because that's either capital or positions. But the good news is it's not a field position. It's, you know, you're, you're, you're dealing or you're, you're impacting the employees that are already here, that are already doing, you know, um, more than, than, um, their normal duties if we are fully employed or fully, um, staffed. Uh, but you're not impacting someone that you have to lay off or something like that. That's, that's the way I have it set up.
And that's the key, really. The budget set aside positions are currently vacant. And those positions, if need be, will be ones we first cut. But with what you've proposed here, we have no layoffs proposed.
Yes, sir. Or for a budget or anything like that.
It, so in regard to, I just wanna follow up on the, on the firefighter position. The, the chief's in agreement that this is something we can hold off on, but roughly maybe for how long? At what point do we, do we say we really need to probably fill that position again?
Well, you know, I think both Chief Kaiser and Chief Roche would, would, would say they're not in agreement with, with, uh, with either one, but they understand, I think, um, you know, the, the, on the fire side, it's, you know, probably a sixty to ninety day process for the hiring. Um, for the police department, the police side, it's a little more touchy because you have to gear that around the academy. So you try and set it up about three or four months before new academy starts. If we're not gonna hire for the June academy, then we probably wouldn't even start anything until August, September timeframe for the January academy.
Yes, regarding the police fire position, the, uh, that vacancy, I know historically, we've always had at least one vacancy. Is that an accurate statement?
Well, um, here, up until this current, to, um, current vacancy, we were actually fully employed for, for, you know, we had some in, in the academy, but, uh, we were, we were fully employed for, for, uh, some time.
So in reality, we've probably got a few months to figure out fire and impact. I would assume that probably Chief Kaiser's gonna, he'll tell us when it becomes an issue and we need to make a decision sooner rather than later. The upside with, with PD is, I think their next academy is what, January?
Well, they, um, I think they're trying to figure out what to do for the gen- June. I don't know that that's been decided on yet, uh, but, uh, yeah, I would, I'd usually, there's two academies in a year.
So we've got a little bit more time on that. In, in looking at the budget set aside, you know, as Mr. Radcliffe pointed out, there's several things that are down to the bone, maybe a little bit deeper. What I would propose, and this doesn't impact the voting on the budget, but maybe determining a priority list of what's in there. Um, so if we do see that revenues are, are tracking well, maybe even higher, we can start restoring some of those cuts um, as, as we're able to track the revenues a little bit better. So things that impact operations or functionality a little bit more, those, those can be prioritized higher than, than other ones that can be held back for a bit.
I can easily put together a little checklist or a, a summary of the ten or twelve items that are in that budget set aside or that budget set aside recommend, represents.
But, but overall, Sean, I will tell you that, uh, I'm impressed. You know, I challenged you and I cut your challenge further. Um, I, I think that this is a, this is a good round one. I think this is certainly good enough for us to take it into the summer when we have a better idea as to where revenues are. Um, one thing I'm, sort of seed I wanna plant, this budget does not propose putting any money into reserves. So I think when we go into this in the summer, that, that's something that we need to, to start considering and trying to prioritize, um, to get our funds reserve built back up.
So I would just say, I, I would really add to the sentiment of, I really appreciate the work that you've done on this, Sean. I, I, speaking for myself, really with the uncertainty of not knowing what the revenues are gonna be, I have no heartburn with us being as to the bound as we can be. But I, I think it's important with that same thought, that it's, that it's important for the department heads to understand that there's absolutely no reason, as you've made mention a couple of times, and I think a couple of other folks have too, you can always go back and add, add more when a problem presents itself. And a lot of, from talking to you, a lot of these line items that you've gone through and eliminated, while it looks like, you know, picking the last straws out, a lot of those line items are line items that aren't necessarily used or used to have completely, you know, to the level that was previously funded. And so we've pulled back a lot of, I don't think fluff's necessarily the right word, but any, any leeway of going, you know, is gone. And so that may very well cause and present, you know, to where it may not be. And, and we should certainly feel comfortable with the thought that someone's gonna have to say, hey, look, I, you know, maybe, you know, volunteer fire is a perfect example. Robbie very likely, if he has a, you know, unfortunately has, you know, a lot of things that those folks have to go, you know, participate in, then that's a, you know, should be expected that he's gonna have to come and say, hey, I know, but I'm gonna be, you know, I'm gonna, you know, in order to make sure that we're funded properly, but maintain what we need to fund, I'm, you know, I'm gonna need three thousand more dollars. And I, I think that should be completely understood and acceptable for people to say, this is what's going on and this is why we need to use more money. This is completely different than what we experienced in two thousand nineteen where we just spent, you know, ended up six hundred thousand dollars short with no requests.
Yeah, with the backwards.
No, it's, there's nothing wrong, there, our, us being financially responsible means we should run a budget that is so tight that if something goes wrong, it requires a request. That's okay. That's not the end of the world. The worst, you know, and I don't think this town or citizens or employees are looking at a council that would deny meat. And so, uh, I for one, I have no, I have no heartburn looking at, you know, the reduction of the budget the way that it is and, and look forward to the conver, you know, we need, I agree with Captain Councilman Radcliffe, we need to get this budget passed. And then we need to continue the conversations that, that we're currently having about, you know, what we do for the future. And, you know, as, as we understand this thing's better.
I do think, Sean, that, those are all good comments. Mr. Dawson?
Um, in, in looking at the budget, the, uh, I would like to keep a, have a list. So in, this budget more so than any is gonna be, they're all living documents, I guess. This one more so than any is gonna require a lot of attention, a lot of frequent attention as we move through this, this, uh, this new process or, or all the unknowns. So one of the things Mr. Goodman and Mr. Radcliffe mentioned, um, you know, police and fire, obviously we wanna keep our eyes on that and understand that we're doing what we need to do and we need to do it. So I would like, with the budget adoption, I would like to see a list of items that we have flagged as needing, um.
In the budget set aside area? Is that one of those gathers you're talking about?
Just an, just an overall action item, if you will, that says, hey, these are some points that were raised during budget discussions because it's gonna be a few months before we're talking about this again. So we're not starting from ground zero, we understand. For instance, I would, I will be interested in, in talking further about, uh, community development plans and how we, how we plan to move forward in that area as a town. And as a council, I think there's a lot of discussion that needs to be had there. It doesn't need to be had now, given all the uncertainties with the budget, but it does need to be had. I think is, should I be fortunate enough to be on council at, um, at the new session? I think it needs to be had soon after that, um, really whether I'm here or not, but it does need to be had. So, and then again, the police and fire, we need to, we need to understand what we're doing there, that we're getting people in. If we need somebody that, that we're funded, that we're getting them trained, you know, obviously, our goal here is not to, to cut services in any way, but to be fiscally sound during these uncertain times. I think you've done a good job of, of drawing that line in the sand and, and kind of holding our position while, while we figure it out and, you know, you know, what blocks in the right places, so we know what's gonna happen going forward. So I would encourage anybody that has something in the budget that they wanna discuss further, uh, and not necessarily at this time that we get it on that, uh, on that list for reference, I can first.
Let me know, I mean, as you, as you think about things, but I think that would be a good spot for the, you know, and if nothing else, if you wanna document it into the budget, we could put that, something like that into the, you know, the budget narrative. You know, as far as, you know, during this budget year, early on, additional conversations for, uh, um, drug, drug task force or for community development or for what have you, uh, are, are gonna be expected.
I was actually gonna suggest that. Um, the budget narrative will be very. I was actually gonna suggest that. Um, the budget narrative will be very important this year, because I think you need to put in the priority list there that we're talking about. The narrative needs to contain information about why these changes remain. We recognize what occurred in previous fiscal years. Recognize what COVID-19 could potentially do to this budget long-term, and further, we need to put in there some of the things that we do wanna talk about. Um, so that's in that narrative, so that people know it's coming. So, if we've got ideas of what we're gonna look at focusing when we, we come back to this in the summer, what might be some triggers for changes and whatnot, that should be contained within the narrative, so everyone knows where the direction is going. Basically, I put it this way, no surprises.
I just wanted to ask you a question. Why does, uh, grant money have to be in the general fund, but make it, make me confused?
Yeah, well, the, I guess what we could be doing, I, I'll take a step back. When we, when we got, when we get a big grant, like the downtown, we have other grants that, that aren't in, you know, aren't, that show up in the CIP, for instance. But when we get like the downtown grant, there are five or six different line items that have to come out of, with legal, or admin, or consultants, or... So, rather than having all of them in one placeholder, in order to track it better, the, the ECD, or EPA, whoever's doing the audit on us, on the grants, they wanna see how much should you specifically spend on consultants, or specifically spend on legal, and having it in as its own department in the general fund is the easiest method for that.
I think, I think that's where it's important, though, when we put this information in, if you have, well, you and I kind of dug the core budget. That's the normal business of the town, and that's your normal general fund, your normal water, your normal sewer. And then if there's any grants or, or specialty projects, or borrowing funds associated with those, then you have that other number. So, you have, like, for example, the sewer fund, you might have three numbers. You have the core, which is our operational. You have the special projects, loans, grants, what have you, and then the final number is that total. And so, people really can start to understand how much it costs to run the town, and then how much all the other little projects, uh, cost as well, before you get that final number. I think it's what's gotten us in trouble in the past. You know, we were talking ten point four million dollars, but that wasn't the core budget. That had CDVG and everything else in it. So, you start to think that we're doing a lot better than we really were. So, we start thinking about that core number. That, that tells us, is a good gauge as to what direction we're going.
And it gives a, you know, it's, it's fun to say, you know, I'm cutting the ten point four budget, million dollar budget down to eight point eight million, but it's not true. You know, we're, we're cutting the nine point seven million dollar budget down to eight point eight. That's more, that's more close, you know, that's closer to the...
You call it that?
Well, it's fine, you know, I, I should, it's a terrible way to put it.
Counting on your humor?
Right. You know, it's, it's been dry earlier than that.
Yeah, I'm sure. Uh, one, one thing I would like to add to that, for that discussion, is the, uh, regarding the budget on the list, the capital outland. I don't wanna lose sight of, of what we've done there, which basically is, uh, taking all capital improvements out, with the exception of the, the building, the, uh, the burning thing.
And I only left that in there because I was anticipating to be funded by, fully funded by grants.
And that's fine. My point is, I wanna make sure that we, we don't lose sight of that, you know, knowing years past that, uh, capital funding is, is kind of, it's the first, it was the first thing for many years uh, way back to, to go away, and as a result, you know, we drove a L A floor dump truck around town for way too many years. So, I wanna make sure that, 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 that it's the attention it needs, and also the unisun reserves. We have a tendency, we owe that money back to the reserve fund. We need to meet requirements of the recommended, requirements, or the recommendations of the, uh, accounting folks, uh, and we need to exceed that. So, I, I think we've, uh, we've got ways to get it, so we, we can't forget the, uh, unisun reserves.
So, uh, in, in essence, what you, the last thing that you had in the package, that are, are colored sheets, I wanna make sure that our council's comfortable with, with taking these numbers as part of that budget ad for, for the May sixth, um, public hearing for the FY twenty-one budget. It's already been, you've already authorized advertising, so I just wanna make sure that those numbers, we've got it ready. Mr. Quester has everything ready to hit the send button first thing in the morning, so...
I, I would continue with that plan.
I will for something out, though, that I, that, that we didn't know, that I found out today. We're gonna have to have a, a fourth public hearing, um, on May sixth. Uh, the PSA is recommending increasing their refuse from seventeen dollars a, a month to eighteen dollars. Now, whether that happens or not, they don't know, but they are holding a public hearing for that increase, so we need to, to hold, uh, settle on, cause we, it's a pass through for us. We bill it and send it on to the PSA.
Do we have any idea what is driving that dollar increase? How could they just did a two dollar increase?
I think most of it is, is tied back to the CIP type expenses, expenditures, to make sure that they can, they can continue to invest in themselves. They have bought a dump, already a trash truck, like, this year, they bought a trash truck, they, they hadn't been a year before, the year, year before that. When you have seven or eight in your, in your arsenal, the problem with that, you need to at least account for that. So, that's my understanding. Um, I, I was assured that they, they're still fifty fifty on whether they move forward with it, but the current proposed budget does have that eighteen dollar rate incorporated into it. So, we will have to have a fourth, uh, public hearing related to the, the refuse, uh, costs.
We might wanna try to use Zoom instead of Facebook Live for that meetings, it'll be easier to do public hearings.
Yeah, I, 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 maybe I didn't, I, I don't think I, I, I explained this as, as well as I should have at the last meeting. What I'm hoping, what I'm planning to do is, we have to host the public hearing, we have to, you know, uh, but what we're dealing with right now is difficult to get public comments. So, I wanna get the budget advertised, get the budget document out there, and, and hold, uh, two-week, um, open comments at, um, uh, time, for, timeframe for public to come and, and, and give us comments openly. Don't have to be at the, doesn't have to be at the council meeting, at the public hearing itself, but at least have that opportunity for folks to, to give that additional comment.
Perhaps maybe just create like a survey monkey, or call tricks, uh, something online, name, address, comments.
I think Facebook even has, has an, an opportunity we can do.
But compile that data, share it back with us, preferably before, before the meeting.
Yes, sir. So, you know what, what the public comment setting is.
Are we, uh, are we looking at doing this as a permanent measure after, after the COVID-19? I would think that, that would be something, I think it's something we should do.
Yeah, I borrowed this from Blacksburg. Blacksburg's, they're, that's how they're doing their pledge of public hearing, and, and I really, um, I really like the, the, I, the concept, and I think we need to, especially if we're gonna have a month. Most of the time, I, I think you have to have a week between the public hearing and the vote, but if you plan on, plan ahead and have that full month, gives you that, a, a good opportunity to get some comments back from the citizens, like we should.
Along those lines, as, as far as us continuing with broadcasting the meetings, I think is something that should...
That we can look at the options. This, we might be able to come up with a better, a better setup and, uh, a temporary.
That's what I was getting at. I, I think it would be good that we make this, so that's...
Sorry, I'm questioning it, uh, I, I...
I, I think, um, I think we look at this and, and make it up, from the standpoint of a long-term endeavor, because I think it, it serves the public, um, and they can sit in the comfort of their home and see what's going on in the town. And I think in the long run, it's gonna, uh, it's gonna be good for the community.
I think it encourages participation a lot. I've, I've had more comments from people being aware and actually listening than, since, since this, than, than I did previously, so... And I think there's a lot of benefit in getting adopted this way.
Yeah, I think really it's just gonna be looking at your IT budget. Um, there's some, some better cameras we can get, um, so we're not running off of somebody's cell phone. Uh, and some, some directional, uh, microphones. I mean, the biggest complaints happening still right now, folks are complaining that they can't hear us very well.
Yeah, we have a speaker up there, but, but the acoustics are, are, are difficult, so I, I thought about even going as far as trying to get a microphone up to the speaker for, for, that would connect, but if we can come up with a full system that's incorporated into the sound system, that's, that's our best alternative.
Yeah, you really want something where it, where it ties into these microphones directly, and then it, it muckses the data back together with the video stream and broadcasts that, broadcasts that whole.
That's an IT guy word, mucks.
Yep.
Can I say, I pay the bills.
I guess you did job. Mr. Goodman, like, I'm bringing some wireless headphones.
So, Mr. I, I think you have your direction, and getting things together. Um, if one has anything else, I will entertain it, and otherwise, we'll, uh, we'll remind everyone that our next meeting is May the sixth, which is a Wednesday, and even though we are thinking that there won't be an election on the fifth, we can't change the date on the meeting, because we've advertised a public hearing for it, or aren't advertising a public hearing for it.
I, I wouldn't say there's not gonna be an election.
I'm not saying either.
There's a lot of...
Lot, lot, who knows what, but at any rate, the next meeting will be on that Wednesday, May the sixth, with or without a May fifth election, so, uh, because that's the way we're advertising the public hearing, so that's, and that will be a seven o'clock meeting, so, uh, we'll plan for that. And that being said, I pay a motion to adjourn.
So, who?
I can.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, gentlemen, we are done. Thank you for your time.